We'll call this meeting the Christiansburg Town Council to order. As we customarily do, we're going to take a moment of silence and reflection and let you think of things that you need, people in your minds and your thoughts, and certainly pray everybody gets home safe tonight. Thank you. We brought some pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to let outgoing councilman Corde Hall lead that pledge one more time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda? I would like to propose moving item C under discussion by mayor and council. I would like to see us, that's reappointment of Steve Simmons, to the, I'd like to move it to above council action on certain requests, so we'll put it at the first of discussion by mayor and council. Did anybody agree with that?
I'll second that.
Motion second, my motion your second.
Did you motion?
Huh?
Did you make a motion?
I did. Okay, all those in the, do we need to, you want to vote on this, Monsieur?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
It will be 6-0, thank you very much. Are there any public hearings scheduled for tonight?
No.
Nothing here. We're going to move into the next portion, which is the administration of the office by Erica Williams, our circuit court clerk, and she will present certificates from the electoral board, and we will start with, Erica, do you want to bring them around, Mr. Hubbard, just for us?
I will, right here in the middle. The mayor, members of the town council, thank you for the invitation, as always, to come and administer here, oh, Mr. Hubbard, we will start with you. I will go slowly, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Steve H. Hubbard?
I, Steve H. Hubbard.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
I will faithfully and partially discharge.
And perform all the duties?
And perform all the duties.
And incumbent upon me?
And incumbent upon me.
As a member of the town council?
As a member of the town council.
For the town of Christiansburg?
For the town of Christiansburg.
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Little signatures and we'll move to the next one.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your help. It's Steve H.
That one not working.
You need to plug that one.
Steve, you can keep that one.
That might be a bad omen, really. Here, I'll leave this up here. I'll give you this one.
And this is on behalf of the Montgomery County Electoral Board.
Aye, well, thank you so much.
And Ms. Sacks?
Ms. Sacks is not here. She'll sit up another time.
Skip that one. Mr. Stipes? Again, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bradford J. Stipes?
I, Bradford J. Stipes.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties?
And perform all the duties.
And incumbent upon me?
And incumbent upon me.
As a member of the town council?
As a member of the town council.
For the town of Christiansburg?
For the town of Christiansburg.
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And on behalf of the Montgomery County Electoral Board?
Thank you again, it's my pleasure to see you.
Nice to see you, too. That only leaves, last but not least, Mr. Barber, Mayor Barber. I, De. Michael Barber?
I, De. Michael Barber.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
That I will faithfully and partially discharge.
And perform all the duties?
And perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me?
Incumbent upon me.
As mayor?
As mayor.
For the town of Christiansburg?
For the town of Christiansburg.
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I'll return it to you. You can keep your pen.
Thank you. My wife gave me this pen. She was watching the whole time.
Thank you, Eric, it's always a pleasure to have you.
It's always a pleasure.
Good having you.
Always a pleasure to be invited.
Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation, congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stipes? Good job.
Absolutely. We, Ms. Sacks was unable, apparently unable to attend tonight because of the weather and her possible health issues, she was invited to both the work session and to the council, so I will get with her tomorrow and we'll set up a time for her to meet with Ms. Williams to take her out. Okay, under the consent agenda, we have several items. Do I have a motion on the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second?
I want to ask you a question. Item B is resolution recognizing Karen Walters. Can you just apprise the public how long she's been a member of the Christiansburg Town staff?
Thirty-three years.
Thirty-three years.
And there's a copy of that agenda, I think, in the packet, so.
I just wanted to add to that.
Yeah, thirty-three years.
That's excellent.
I think the day after she retired from us, she went part-time to the county, but she's, she was in today, looks good, she's enjoying her retirement. This is a portion of the, yeah, let's go ahead and vote on that. Thank you, Monsieur.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
It is 6-0, thank you. This is a portion of the meeting for citizens' comments. If you have anything that you want to discuss, bring to the attention of the town, or anyway elaborate on anything that you may want to. I'll ask that you stand, you can come to the podium, or you can stand at your seat. Make sure that we get your name and address for the remarks, and your comments are addressed to the chair. Is there anyone here who would like to address under citizens' comment? Do you have any? I will quickly close there. Introductions and presentations, Town Council and Christiansburg High School partnership.
Okay, sir, apparently the students are having the exams this week, so they're not here tonight.
I noticed that the school board had canceled all activities of the school, so we'll get back on them next week, right?
Yeah.
Our next presentation is from Christie Straight, Regional Planner II, New River Valley Regional Permission, and New River Valley Hazard Mitigation Plan 2017 update. There you are. If you all are looking around like you weren't here.
Just a while to get in here, brush a little hair. Well, I thank you all for giving me some time this evening to share the Hazard Mitigation Plan update with you. I'm going to walk through what we accomplished and kind of how the process worked. Okay. Not anymore. Okay, well, you're getting the highlights of what I'm going to cover as it goes through. But, well, I want to start with the definition of hazard mitigation. I've been doing this at every presentation, just so that everyone I talk to is on the same page about what that means. Mitigation is different than the response, recovery, and preparation that you see with specific events. This one's more about avoiding or minimizing the impacts of future events, so this plan is all about that, minimizing or avoiding impacts of future events. The plan that we've been working on creates outcomes and opportunities for communities to build resilience with projects on the ground. The plan we've worked on is mandatory five-year update with FEMA, and that lets localities like yourself remain eligible for mitigation funds on projects that you may want to do. Without that, you'd be eligible for immediate disaster relief activities, but no long-term projects that help you prepare for the future. I like, I like this process, I think it's really important for the region and the communities because it gives stakeholders time to focus on projects that benefit our citizens outside of those immediate needs I've mentioned. And doing this as a regional effort lets us at the commission deliver on its mission to you to convene stakeholders for collaboration and partnerships. So collaboration and partnership, we flashed through that nifty slide that had all the logos on it, and that's just the representation of all the folks that were involved in terms of localities and some of our state and federal partners. There aren't many others who participated on the steering committee, working groups, public involvement, and helping us develop strategies and the data that we've collected. Our 2017 hazard rankings, this is kind of the snapshot image, the key piece that if you take nothing else away, take this away. This tells you where we stand in terms of hazards that are at risk for us in the region. Our top three are no change, there are freezing temperatures, high winds, and flooding. And then our medium and low hazards, we've had wildfire shift from our low to medium categories, and I put that down to some data and research that shows that as communities build near forests and national forests and wooded areas, there's more risk. It's not necessarily more events, just more risk to those events happening in that area. But also, our evaluators ranked in that perception that there are more fires, particularly with the fall fires in 2016 and the very large fire in Tennessee around that same time, kind of built awareness and made us know that it really could happen here, given what we're seeing in the data. Summary of the process, I mentioned the steering committee and working groups, and this is how we got the work done. Staff worked with our steering committee to meet monthly, go over the data, develop our working group committees identifying those members to participate, and then we broke into working groups based on the hazards that we were identifying. Our GIS and planning staff pulled together the data we needed to create that mapping and identify what our hazards are, where we see those, what we think the extent of the impacts are going to be. And because our working group also included some subject matter experts and locality staff who know what's happening on the ground, and then some other folks with knowledge for us to draw on, we feel very confident in the data we've included in this plan. And I will say, it's very data intensive, and when I talk about mapping, I call it out separately simply because we had fifty-seven maps in our hierarchy. I mean, you saw the list of hazards, clearly more mapping than hazards, because there was just that much information to evaluate and go into. So what this plan does for local and regional mitigation, there's a slide there that lists out, we talk about overview of the hazards of concern locally and in every community and regionally. We talk about current and ongoing mitigation efforts that every community is doing to help them identify where they've been, where they want to go. And we also have an updated list of projects identified for future mitigation opportunities. Some localities experience what's called a special hazard area. Christiansburg doesn't really have that. Your largest hazard is flooding, which is true of nearly every community in the New River Valley. And in terms of local mitigation, to continue with that theme, we've thrown up two slides. The first one here is your potential projects. This is what's in the 2017 list, and at this point, what FEMA knows, which is what we would be eligible for projects. I will say, it's not the end-all-be-all, if you wanted to add projects because certain things came up, that's possible to do. This process lets us do it in a pretty effective and efficient way. But I also want to point out where you've been and what you've done, because this plan includes that, and it's an important process of keeping this plan alive and making sure we're moving forward with progress. So projects completed since the last plan, there's four of them on there that we've been cycling through, and I just wanted to point those out so that you all see what staff has been working on and accomplishing to make this city more resilient for its community members. And the last thing I'll point out about those two slides is nearly all of them are addressed to the flooding risk. There's one that addresses wildfire, wind, and winter weather, and undergrounding utilities, and it also could be helpful for flooding, covers a lot of bases. With that, our website address is in the handout you've received in your agenda packet, as well as in this presentation, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions and discussion relevant.
So you work with our planning and engineering staff, town management, the whole team?
Yes, sir, so we've been working on the steering committee, the planning department, and we would bring in the fire department and engineering when needed for different subjects, so we've been doing this for about a year now. So it's been nice to see the project come together from a regional perspective, and I think it's a good product, and it helps us kind of know where we are and what projects we probably need to focus in on more as we move forward. As you see here, as you see on the next slide, some of the projects that we've been working on, one that's listed and has been very prominent in the town is the Brown Church-Lucas Storm Drain Improvements, and I think, as you've probably heard from citizens, that's been very well received and a very successful project for addressing damage issues in one of our older neighborhoods.
One question from Ms. Straight, one of the risks was human-caused drought, what does that mean?
There was probably a comma missing, to be honest with you. Human-caused is one of the hazards, and then drought, and...
To let you know I was paying attention, I saw that, what is that?
Councilman of the night.
Yeah, there you go. Oh, human-caused, okay, so it's a different line, okay.
And then as Christie mentioned, what was in your packet was a four-page consuming kind of report, but if you would like, anyone from the public or council would like to see the entire plan, it is located on the regional commission's website.
And I have to say...
There is a resolution in your packet this evening that you would be asked to consider later in the agenda for support of this mitigation plan. It is going to all the localities in the region. I'm sorry, Mr. Collins?
I have to say, we've worked together with a flooding project, one for this town, other town, and these flooding projects are, there's a lot of information that's needed, a lot of work, and she is a first-class lady, she knows her stuff, and she's tremendously helpful to everybody. We thank you very much.
I'd just like to echo Harry. Harry and I serve on the regional commission, so we've heard this presentation before, and I just appreciate the mystery coming out tonight and filling us in, and just overwhelmingly, we always admire what our new regional commission team does, and we just thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Next is Wayne Nelson, Engineering Director, to present the Cambria Street Intersection and North Franklin Street Corridor Improvement Project Design, which incorporates design, public hearing comments, relevant to the major design features of the project. You've got two minutes, Wayne.
Thank you.
Fast forward a couple more.
That's all you need right there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to introduce a special guest, Rick Delong. He's the Director of Transportation Engineering for McCormick Taylor, our design consultant for our project. Later in the meeting, you will be asked to vote on the approval of the major design features of this project, requirement of VDOT to move this forward, and tonight I'd like to go over those major design features and kind of work our way down through the project, if you bear with me here. First, I'll break the project up into two pieces. The first obvious piece here is the reconfiguration of the Cambria intersection. And this is existing 460 business, that pavement will be eradicated, it'll turn back to green, and a new connection will be constructed here with a signal, which will alternate traffic, and as it queues, it'll, traffic will pass through the intersection. We, ironically, it was about a year, it was a year and one day ago that council approved the engineering contract for McCormick Taylor to begin the project, and in that time, McCormick Taylor, along with Kim Lee Horn, their transportation, traffic engineer specialist, I'll call him, reviewed, analyzed different options. We've taken that analysis, we've sat with VDOT, VDOT reviewed the study and concurred with a conclusion. We briefed the street committee as we advanced the design, and here we are today. We think this is a good design, we know it'll work, and we'll have the ability to, as part of this project, look at the traffic signals down the corridor and adjust the timing accordingly. Do you have your hands and your pen crossed now? Would you mind? I have to use my left hand, I'm right-handed, so I don't want to... As we move down the corridor, the design emphasis of the project is for access management. The cross-section will, and the project will include curb and gutter and sidewalks, storm drain improvements, bike lanes on the road itself, is some of the major features. I do want to point out here that at this location, we will continue to have a left turn in to this shopping center and McDonald's. It will continue to function as a, as a write-out only here. The median will extend down the center. Access to Central Avenue would be cut off. That was a concern expressed during the public hearing. We have evaluated all the comments, and those comments were provided to you. We're certainly sensitive to businesses in town and the impacts. And in response to that, we've asked McCormick Taylor, and this is shown here, they extended this turn lane down to the church's entrance, which allows traffic to make a U-turn if they want to access Central Avenue, a U-turn, and progress right into the turn lane and onto Central Avenue. You know, from access management and safety standpoint, we feel this is, this is the best alternative. I think we'll get into more discussion with business owners as we proceed to the rightway phase, and there are maybe future projects that could be considered that weren't planned as part of this project, but it's an option, it's an option for consideration. The, this is the connector road, what we call the connector road, hopefully to be named in not-too-distant future. Since the public hearing, we have shifted the connector road to the north to utilize more of the land that the town purchased in support of this project. We are closing, as part of access management, we are closing entrances on North Franklin, including our own at the recreation center. We will maintain a right-in, right-out entrance here, and part of this project will involve creating essentially a service road across the frontage of the Food Line Shopping Center in order to provide access to businesses that will be town-maintained. These businesses had a town-maintained street before this project, they'll have a town-maintained street after this project. Patrick's Way will be, will be vacated and the pavement eradicated, and as we get into rightway negotiations, there are concerns expressed, as you note in the packet, in regards to access to and from these businesses. I don't feel this is appropriate that we get into some details here, but when we speak with these business owners, we will present options that are available here to us. The shopping center owner is very supportive of this project, and he's aware of the concerns they have, and he is, he's willing to work with us as well to mitigate their concerns. So what we'll end up, we'll need to name this street as well, and that'll come before council as well. But we will have a town-maintained access from the connector road up to the recreation center. This will be maintained as well. The church, their entrance, that'll be, that pavement will be eradicated, and we're providing a new connection for them to line up with the connector road. Okay, if we move further down?
Wayne, can I make a comment?
Yes, you can.
We have council who have taken emails and calls, especially at campaign time. Patrick's Way has been a major issue for Oak Tree to get ingress and egress, is the engineering term for it, to get in and out of this. So this is, this new intersection there is going to be a huge benefit to clean up the neighborhood and be able to get that, you know, the commercial and residential traffic volumes out on North Franklin safely.
And, yeah, via stoplight, which is crucial.
We've talked, some of us have been on for several years and heard a lot about that. We've talked about Patrick's Way, we hear, you know, we hear about that a lot, but I would just want to emphasize for those of you that are feeling... But I just want to emphasize, for those of you that are feeling calls, that this has been really addressed 95% of their concerns there about getting in and out safely.
Maybe a little hard to see, but there's a crosswalk right here. And this allows, thank you, thank you Peter. This allows for safe, protected movements of traffic, of pedestrians across North Franklin. Twenty-six thousand vehicles a day. It's a busy highway. And this incorporates the need and safety that we're all looking for.
And this little road will not affect the Waffle House?
No, sir.
Their entrance to the same.
They'll benefit from this.
Okay.
The, as we move up the corridor, thank you Wayne. We will, here at the Horn Funeral Home, we're able to maintain their ability to make a left, as it's so important to them, for their business. When they're...
That's tough right there.
They, when they're, have a funeral, having services, that'll still allow them to make a left, but this back entrance to the high school will be a right-in, right-out only. The median is being extended. People have a strong will sometimes. They still run that backwards at, across from McDonald's. I saw it probably a week and a half ago. People still try to do that. The sidewalk extends up and terminates here. This is where the Huckleberry Trail will come up and touch right here and extend down the right way. The median has been extended, and there's sidewalk on, again, on both sides of North Franklin. And this work that we are proposing here as we advance out to Independence. Jay Neal has coordinated with McCormick Taylor, and the work that we completed, just completed here, will tie into this work. And the sidewalk will tie into the sidewalk that was just recently constructed. We hope, we hope, if funds allowed, we have designed this, Jay Neal designed this, so that currently it's a left-turn center and a right-turn lane. We hope to have available money to upgrade the signals here, to allow for additional head, so that we can have, the center lane would be a left and a straight through, so we can take greater advantage of that, of this reconstructed median here and push more traffic through this intersection. I think that's a fairly good assessment of the major design components. There's a lot of things we'll be tweaking in the coming months. We hope to, hope to gain approval tonight, and then I will notify VDOT tomorrow, and we're looking to proceed to the rightway plans during the month of January, at what point, at that point, we can start sitting down with property owners and getting into some of the details that have concerned me.
One question, are we, are you done?
Yes, sir.
One question and one comment. First question is, are we pretty much on schedule with what we promised VDOT as far as the project, you know, delivery?
Yes, we are.
Okay, second, okay, good. The second thought, this is a thought for counsel and observation, and Mr. DeLonge can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have heard through the years, from time to time, we've heard about speed reduction on North Franklin Street. I'm not a big fan of that, but I will point out, and I'll ask Mr. DeLonge to correct me if I'm wrong, but VDOT does not, they frown on sidewalks on facilities that are higher than 40 miles per hour speed.
Yeah, I mean, and certainly, and I know there was also some discussion about having the honor of bike lanes, that...
Yeah.
The honor of bike lanes, we want to have a design speed that's, or the posted speed of 40.
Yeah, and we've had the same conversation along Pepper's Ferry Road, but I think, now I live along Pepper's Ferry Road, and that is a lot calmer. The out-of-town folks don't like it because of speed through there, but the reason I point this out is, when this project, as it gets closer to being online, I will support a speed reduction in this area to 35. It's a calming effect, and it's going to encourage people to feel safe on their bikes and walking alongside the road. So the time will be right. I'll just point that out to you guys, the council, that at that time, I'm going to be supporting the speed reduction in that area to create more of a complete street environment to where bicycles, pedestrians, and cars feel safe to use it.
On that note, thank you for bringing that up, which is the most important, because this design is based on that need to reduce the speed limit to 40 miles per hour. So respectfully, ask your concurrence on that issue as we push this project forward, that we will need to reduce it to, you know, about...
At least 40.
At least.
Right.
Thirty-seven to the maximum of 40.
I've got just a couple of quick questions and maybe, maybe comment. First off, just to peek you back and segue after, as to what Mr. Stipes had mentioned. Speed reduction, currently it's 45, but to go to 40 or even 35, depending, it's, I take it, it would not only exist from the current intersection of Cambria and North Franklin, but it would actually extend probably all the way to where the, I'm thinking of where like the Gates Flores was located at. It would just connect, it would be consistent, correct? We're not going to be going 35, and then from the high school intersection with Independence to the gates where it's 45. It's going to be complete, even though we're not doing anything down on that end of the town, correct?
That's correct.
The other comment I wanted to make, or two other quick comments. First off, the end, if you go to the left, Andrew, put the hand, I'm very excited. Number one, we're getting sidewalks from our high school. And right now, we see our kids walking through the fields, or on the street, or jetting out, and it's very dangerous because of all these ingress points. And there are a lot of times coming down the hill, a lot of times are running across the street to McDonald's, those that are not in driving yet. But this, obviously, from a health and safety standpoint, deals with that issue, which we see a lot. And again, I live on Independence, so I'm seeing it every day. The ingress points, getting rid of those, especially the one that is there at the recreation center, and the third one down, that's where I see cars sliding in, skidding in. It's non-stop. And then half the time, you know, they're not giving themselves adequate time anyway to take that right when other cars are coming. It's a mess. Getting rid of those three ingress points, and I guess, and egress points, is critical and crucial. I'm very excited about that, and really consolidating the entrance and exit points at areas that are signaled. Obviously, there's a median area there, and it's, again, safe. So again, I'm very appreciative of that. And the fact that we're going to maintain that road beneath or on the other side, again, I think gives me, it takes a lot of pause away that otherwise we may have, and so the businesses may have. Last comment, if you go farther to the left, this is the biggie. Two quick things. We're not going to get rid of the connection point from coming into town to, yeah, right, we're going to keep the one to Cambria, correct? So those are residents that live back. Okay, can you go, can you go that direction? Upon that, that intersection there, that flows into the off-ramp or the, from the, from the bypass, post that stoplight to the intersection of Cambria and Franklin, that's going to be four lanes, correct? One left, one right, two straight forward. Is that, is that the way I see it as well? So we're not going to be trying to consolidate all this traffic into two lanes. It's going to be now four lanes. We're going to be utilizing what's already on the left of the median, just getting rid of the median, left, right, and two straight, correct?
Your standard, yeah. Two through lanes, your left turn.
Can you zoom in on that?
Dedicated right.
There we go. And that, that's what I wanted to, so we're going to be able to utilize what we've already got there, but that, that to me was a, there's nothing more confusing than the people trying to go left, and they, they're in that lane, and you're trying to get, it's just a mess. But again, I'm excited. This is exciting stuff, because we've talked about this for a couple of years and seen the need for it for longer than that. And this is by far the most, if there's going to be an incident where people get upset and irritated, this is where it's at. Again, it's such a mess, and to see what this, what it's going to look like, again, it's a very exciting thing. It's, it's much more safe as we move forward. So again, Mr. Nelson, I know you've been a proponent of this, and Mr. Wingfield as well. Thank you so much for your hard work. We're here, and yes, Andrew, we're finally here, and I don't have any reservations, none whatsoever, about supporting this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That junction right there, I think people will blush you.
They'll honk.
They will certainly mention your name.
I think Mr. DeLonge and his firm have done a good job.
Yes. And I shouldn't have let you all in. I apologize for that.
Not at all. Thank you. It's been great to work with. It's been a great project. It really has. So we're excited to keep moving forward.
I feel like we piecemeal. We've got to get rid of a left turn here. We get rid of a right out here, a left out from McDonald's. We've tried to do everything we can, but this is fantastic.
Pretty good.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I first want to apologize to one of our guests here tonight, Mr. Judge Fionn, who is the manager of New Valley Law, Judge, back there?
I couldn't see.
Yeah, he was hiding behind, he was hiding behind you, and so, but anyway, welcome to council. You're fairly new within the last year?
2016.
Okay, Mr. DeLonge. First chance we've had officially meeting. We do appreciate you coming, and we, I think, at some point, you and the owners want to come talk to us.
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you. So I apologize for not mentioning him, and of course, my wife Eileen, and my granddaughter Maggie.
Braving the elements, that's right.
They are.
Thank you.
I think somebody promised to free me.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you. Okay, I have, at this point, I have a presentation that I have been holding on to since that person is here tonight. I want to make sure that I can do this. As we all know, Councilman Court Hall is retiring at the end of this month after a nice eight-year tenure on council. And Court, I'd like you to come forward. We have a gift for you that we, we want to bestow upon you in just, in appreciation of your years of service to the town.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You can open it if you want.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Maybe not.
We know what it is, but we haven't seen it.
You don't mind opening up right now?
No, it's not. I mean, we've kind of had a scrape for ribbon. There's not a lot of general purpose ribbon here, so we... This clock that we have, you know, plaques and things, people don't, like, some people don't like to mail them all up. And I thought, you know, I should have given you this eight years ago, this clock to keep up with that. I'm just kidding, but if I might read it?
Please, please.
It says, "Presented to our Court Hall for your dedicated service to the town of Christiansburg and our citizens, 2010-2017."
Well, I really appreciate that.
But it doesn't count as an hour ago.
No, it doesn't. No, I absolutely don't deserve any standing ovation by any stretch. I don't deserve this either.
Yes, you do.
No, I really don't. It's, but I will say one quick thing, or maybe two. But I will tell you, it's been a, the only word I have for it is, it's been a blessing to be on council. It's been a blessing to be elected twice by the citizens. It was very difficult not to run this last time, but it was, again, it was very much a family decision, therefore it was very, very easy to make, when it was a full family decision. And my family's always been very much behind me. I will tell you, and I won't delay for this, I'm going to miss being on town council. I'm going to miss being a member of the Recreation Commission. I'm going to cherish the relationships I made. I've become very close, probably no member of staff I'm quite close with radically, and probably Mr. Nelson, who I think a lot of, Ms. Tweedy I'm going to miss, Mr. Wingfield. I can't go through everybody. I'm going to leave somebody out I know. But the members of council, you know, it's, I think we've got a great group. I know we've got a great group. And again, I'm going to, but again, I don't want to go too, too long, but it really has been a blessing and such an honor to be elected twice to serve the citizens of Christiansburg. I don't know what the future holds, but I do know, looking back, I think there's a lot of great things that we've done together. And I think, again, I thank you all for recognizing me with this. Again, I don't think that I deserve it, but I do appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
If you can figure out how to pack a back row, you can do it.
Mr. Hall actually was modest. He's won two elections, but those of us who've run know that he's the highest vote getter in any election he runs in. He won enough the first election for both elections.
And I got to tell you what kind of person he is. He didn't come out of the race until I went around and got all these signatures for him.
We will certainly have any other closing pot shots. At this point, want to recognize Mr. Steve Simmons, who is here as the Aquatic Advisory Board. Mr. Simmons has served on that board, I guess, since the day we opened over there. And his term expires the end of this month. He has graciously said he would like to serve another four months, and I think he, he is a very, very good contributing member of that commit, of that committee and commission. Amelia Tuckwiler, Tuckwiler was going to come tonight. I think she's having trouble getting here. She said she could come in May, I mean, in January. So we'll delay that, and there is one other opening that I believe the board will be discussing in the next few days, and we should have that recommendation also for January.
How long was his, again?
Four years.
Four years. He's just four months.
You know, old Simmons, I don't, he's going to retire soon. I don't know.
And Carrie?
Yes, sir.
Just Carrie forced us to come back.
Oh, did she?
But he has been a big proponent of the Aquatic Center since day one. And Steve, thank you. I appreciate it. We appreciate it. Hi, Steve.
I wanted to say a few words about what the, what Steve has done and what Carrie is doing right now at the Aquatic Center. And I'm not sure if everybody knows, but the last couple of years on Black Friday, the Aquatic Center has provided special deals for people to sign up to get, you know, passes for the year. And last year, they did a commendant job of a little bit over $30,000, you know, from passes that, you know, to let you in the pool. And I thought that was really outstanding. And then Carrie told me this year that on that Black Friday week, they got $53,000. And I thought that was a tremendous deal on what they've done. And it's a credit to the board and Carrie and her staff. And while we're talking about that, too, I guess everybody knows, this past weekend, for four days, they had the largest swim meet that the Aquatic Center's ever had. Over 1,350 kids were swimming right there, and for four days. And I know a friend of mine who went to the Olive Garden Sunday afternoon and had to wait an hour and a half, you know, to get, get a place there. So I would just like to commend what you're doing, Carrie. I hope you pass on to your staff, too. And Steve, thank you for all your work due to, to make the Aquatic Center what it is today.
Does that hear $50,000?
Fifty-three.
$53,000.
And more important, lady, was we had doubled our memberships for town residents. And that was, that was the goal, more than the financial goal. So I was just really pleased to see town residents really embracing the...
Oh, absolutely. Well, y'all got the sign out, too. I mean, it's, you've got, a road front is there on the, where the signs at, as far as getting people in. I didn't realize. I would never have guessed it'd been that much. That's tremendous.
Amazing.
That is. That is.
Carrie, you might want to mention what you're going to do on New Year's.
The New Year's Eve splash will be the 30th this year, that evening. This is our second year of celebrating New Year's Eve for families. second year of celebrating New Year's Eve for families. We moved it to Saturday night this year, simply because New Year's Eve falls on Sunday night this year, so we didn't feel it was appropriate to be celebrating at the Aquatic Center on Sunday night for New Year's Eve, so we'll be there Saturday night, and we'll see information come out about that.
Okay, done, thank you, Steve. Now, to proceed, resounding request by John Neal, Gay and Neal Incorporated, action for Sarah Crawford, for the portion of tax map number 530-2-87A1, parcel ID 01937, located in the corner of Blade Drive Southeast and Curtis Drive Southeast, from A Agriculture to R3 Multi-Family Residential. The property is designed as residential on the future land use map, the Town of Christiansburg 2013 Comprehensive Plan, and the public hearing was held on November the 28th, 2017.
Make the motion, we accept the plan of the commission's recommendation to approve the request, and I'll make that, I'll make the motion that we approve it.
Second. The motion in the second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is 6O, thank you. Contingent upon the above request, conditional use permit request by John Neal, Gay and Neal Incorporated for tax map number 530-2-87A1, parcel ID 01937, located on the corner of Blade Drive Southeast and Curtis Drive Southeast, for a planned housing development consisting of up to 60 single-family dwellings in the R3 Multi-Family Residential District. This public hearing was also held on November the 28th, 2017.
Do we approve the CUP request as presented?
Second. The motion in the second, any discussions, comments, hearing done, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
This is 6O, thank you, John.
Thanks, sir.
Go to work. Approval of the major design features of the Cambria Street Intersection and North Franklin Street Improvement Project is proposed by the Engineering Department during introductions and presentations.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the major design features of the Cambria Street Intersection and North Franklin Street Improvements Project as proposed and as presented this evening.
Second. Got a motion in the second, discussions, comments, we're excited about all of this.
Yeah, that was great.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6O, again, thank you very much. Resolution of adoption of the New River Valley, resolution of adoption of the New River Valley Hazard Mitigation Plan 2017 update.
Make the motion that we approve the resolution of adoption of the New River Valley Hazard Mitigation Plan, the 2017 update.
Got a motion in the second, any comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is 6O, again, thank you very much. Staff reports, Town Manager?
Couple of things, I'm just going to forward around, one's a thank you letter from Marine Energy Services for contribution, again, to their budget, and also just a thank you card from a couple of citizens, it's kind of a Christmas card, but it's just kind of Council, she was requesting to do that in January, she is planning on coming to the thank you to Town Council and staff, just for basically a well-known town. Blacksburg Town Council on the 9th, which is our first meeting. Our next meeting, she's going to be out of town, she would be back, available for the Tuesday of the 30th, which is the fifth Tuesday. Would you want to have a work session on that Tuesday?
I think the members of council will be free on January the 1st, and so by that time, I propose the meeting.
Big clock. No, well, I think...
If you don't want to do it the 30th, you're probably looking at one of the February meet.
That's fine.
That's fine.
That's fine.
First, first meeting in February.
That's fine.
That's all I've got.
Town Attorney?
Don't have anything, thank you.
Any other staff? Ms. Tweedy?
I just wanted to tell, Ford, thank you very much, I've enjoyed working with you over the last eight years.
I don't know how you tolerate me sometimes, Ms. Tweedy, but it just shows how excellent you are at everything that you do. I thoroughly enjoy you.
I appreciate your service, and I've enjoyed working with you, so, sorry to see you again.
Thank you very much.
Town Council reports, Mr. Hall, one last time.
With the weather, Judge, I meant, Judge. Now, I, I'm very, I believe that Mr. Collins, I think he will be taking my position on the Recreation Commission.
Yes, sir.
There couldn't be a better person to take my position over, they're, they're very, I think, and they're very enthusiastic about what he'll be able to do, and his passion is contagious and energy, so that's all that I, with the weather tonight, that's all I have to report.
Very good. Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir, I just have to tell Mr. Hall, I appreciate serving with him, I've learned so much from him, admire him so much, and he's part of my family forever.
You got anything left?
I would, since this is the last meeting of 2017, I would like to encourage all of you to maybe get your water bottle here, and I would like to propose a toast, that we could have a smooth and efficient year in 2018, to 2018.
All right. Mr. Stipes?
Number four, thank you, Mayor.
I will echo to all the other comments about what a pleasure it has been serving with Mr. Hall, he has been a true asset to the town and to the Town Council, and I'm not going to make any smart comments like I was six foot five before you came on council. I'm not going to do any of that kind of stuff, I'm a brother, but, again, I want to say that it has been a pleasure.
Absolutely, pleasure's been mine to be a member of the council.
Is there any other business to come before council?
I guess that's my case.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have two items I need to bring before council. Request for closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A5, for discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry intent, interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. The closed meeting has been held to discuss an economic development prospect.
Second.
Request for closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, for the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of a specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. The closed meeting has been held for discussion of personnel, particularly clerk of council position.
Second.
And that is formal motion, now.
Second. Mr. Both, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
This is 6O, we're going to take about a two or three minute break to...
Take that.
...get the, grab the time to disperse if they so want to, or, I don't think there's anybody to... We're going to reconvene.
All right, I make a motion that we enter back into open session.
It is a motion.
Second, second.
Any discussion, hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
I assume it's okay for me to vote on this?
This is just a, come out of the session.
This one is, okay, aye. This is 6O, thank you.
All right, now I need to, okay, I move, I move to certify that the Town Council, the Town of Christiansburg, meeting in closed meetings, in the best of each member's knowledge, discuss only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters are identified in the resolution to enter into a closed meeting. That's formal motion.
Second.
Motion in the second, discussion, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is 6O, thank you. All right, the first council action on the matter is, the first matter is, I'm looking for a recommendation or, or a, a motion to approve the performance agreement that we spoke of in closed session, subject to approval by the Town Attorney, and subsequent any minor administrative changes that may need to take place.
I would move that we approve the performance agreement as discussed, contingent upon review, final review by the Town Attorney, and of course, any administrative minor alterations that would otherwise be approved necessary.
Second. The motion in the second, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is 6O, thank you very much. The second matter, after discussion with the, amongst council, and with an increased amount of additional meetings that we're asking the clerk of council to be part of, the work sessions and so on, is that council has agreed to increase her salary effective January the 1st to $1,200 a month, and I would look for that motion.
I would make a motion that, effective January 1, 2018, that the clerk of council be compensated at the amount of $1,200 per month at that time.
Second. Got a motion in the second, any discussion?
Ms. Stipes, you're a valued member of our council, and as a member of our, with our, as our clerk, and the, the works that, you keep very good minutes, very, you always have been very organized, and again, I think that I will be a member of council, but going forward to be able to look at those, those minutes and things that you provide are fantastic, and it's been a pleasure working with you, and your integrity and your character is beyond question, we couldn't have a better person.
Thank you, Clerk.
So that's the motion.
That'd be mine, that'd be mine, that's my talk, man.
Do you have a second?
It's the last time I'm ever going to get to talk, and I'm going to say that.
Are you in?
We got a second, he's second.
You got a second, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?